I pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting, the Edinburgh Town Council meeting for Monday, August 25th, 2025. We'll start off with a roll call here. Our council president, Mr. Chris Field, is out tonight. Next one, Debbie Boff here, Sherry Sweet here, Mr. Bryant.
Here.
Myself, Marion Rooks, Court Treasurer Rhonda Barrett, Town Manager John Myers, and our council attorney Dustin Hudson. Next, we have on the agenda the minutes of council meeting, August 11th of 2025. I'll entertain any discussion or any corrections, amendments. There are any?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from August 11th, 2025.
Second.
All votes in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the claims. Mrs. Barrett, you have anything to add?
Yeah, in your packet, you received a claim document in the amount of $1,163,506.60. All claims have been reviewed and signed. Part of that large amount are impabilled alone as like 780,000, so that's why such a like.
Anyone have any questions?
There are no questions. I'll make a motion to approve the claims that submitted.
Okay, we have, our motion is second. All votes in favor of the claims, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries. Next on the agenda, ordinance 2025-12, vacating a portion of a certain public street located on Holland Street. This is the first reading. Be presented by Mr. Hudson.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Counsel, if you remember, we had a public hearing on this. This is one of the two alleys we were vacating. All the information is ready for the ordinance to adopt, so this is part of the petition we approved at the public hearing. Since it's an ordinance, you can have the introductory today and have the second reading when it's approved at the next meeting, or if you want to waive the first reading, you can.
Anyone have any discussion? I personally see no reason not to.
I'll make a motion to waive the first reading for ordinance 2025-12.
Okay. We'll have a motion and a second. All those in favor of waiving the first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay.
Then you just need a motion to approve it?
Correct.
Yeah. Make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-12, vacating a portion of a certain public street located at Holland Street.
Second. Have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none.
Counsel, once that's signed, I have to record that in the county recording office, and Ryan will get that to you.
Thank you, Hudson. Mr. Hudson will be up next again with Resolution 2025-7, authorizing special purchase of the APX portable and mobile radios.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Counsel, if you remember, this was presented by Chief Waller. We're purchasing 10 new radios for the fire department. It is at the discounted price, so it's a special purchase of the radio. So this is ready for your consideration.
Counsel, on your call, Justin already gave us his information at the last meeting. So anybody have any questions?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-7, authorizing special purchase of APX portable and mobile radios.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I was going to ask about that. Just understand, flip the page.
Okay.
Now, how do we do that since Ryan's not here?
You authorize John to sign?
John, okay.
Motion for Town Manager John Myers to sign Resolution 2025-7, authorizing special purchase of APX portable. Actually, it's not the resolution, it's the. Oh, the purchase agreement, purchase agreement. Authorizing special purchase of APX portable and mobile radio.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, motion carries. Next, we have Mr. Hudson up again with the Resolution 2025-8, DITEX tax abatement.
You recall, we had a public hearing of the presentation of a new tax abatement for personal property for DITEX. This resolution provides average approval. It's a five-year payment with appropriate schedule on the reduction of the tax. It's ready for your consideration. The next item you also consider, this is a memorandum agreement, which provides the terms that DITEX has to comply with. This was contained in their application, so if they do not live up to those terms, you have a right to.
Anyone have any questions?
I got a question. I think it's. And was it in your tax abatement?
The resolution has five years.
The only reason I asked was every, the last 10 I've got here, it's been 10 years, so I just wanted to know if I have five years this time.
Julie, would you like to step up?
Thank you, counsel. As we have discussed several times, the legislature has passed several changes to the personal property tax, and so the largest changes are scheduled to take effect in 2020, and the community actually said that personal property tax abatement was maybe a thing of the past in 2028 and beyond. So passing property tax abatement for personal property may be something that town councils do not consider. So a five-year abatement essentially bridges the gap, but still a new tax change in take up that from the state.
That answer your question, sir?
Really, this is.
If I may, usually on personal property, if we're in common to go 10 years, it's usually three to five years. I've never seen one. I'm not saying it hasn't happened, but I haven't seen one go for personal property for 10 years for $2 million.
And that is also very common for our other communities that we see is real property is a 10-year schedule, and personal is on a five-year schedule unless it is a very significant investment.
But really, this was a pretty significant investment. I mean, I took $2 million. I mean.
But is the council name?
They've suggested to us to go with the five years.
I'm confused too, because Mr. Gillingham's firm signed a memorandum agreement that says they agree with five years. We're not on the same page.
Well, we have a five-year signature, and then a five years.
You could take another advisement if you'd like, and not pass it today.
Can they, if they choose in five years, can they do it again?
Sure.
So they can choose, so that they have it.
You don't have to pass it today if you'd like more information and you want to consider this. It'll have to be passed to them.
Do you like for us not to entertain a motion, do you like to pass it for any continuation of the discussion? But as Mr. Hudson said, we do have that memorandum agreement signed for the five years. Did you hear me, sir?
Pardon?
I said, would you like for us, do you need some more time to discuss it with your other owners or set up for the five years? Okay. Justin, do I reroute? Do I just ask for the approval of the resolution?
Resolution is first.
Right, okay. I need a.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-8, DITEX tax abatement.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, at the DITEX memorandum of agreement.
Make a motion to approve the DITEX memorandum of agreement.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the public official bond, read by Mrs. Barrett.
Yes, the annual public official bond for John Myers for the time period of August 25 through August 26 needs approval and signature by the council.
Do I have any questions?
I make a motion to approve the public official bond for Mr. Myers.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Next up on the agenda is the K-9 fund donation. Mrs. Barrett.
Okay, the police department has received several donations totaling $700 for the golf scramble. The donors are Nancy West, Kelly Rollheim, Boit Products, and the council approved.
Make a motion to accept the donation for the K-9 fund.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Thank you, Mrs. Barrett. Next, Rhonda will have you up again with the purchasing policy updates.
Okay, our current purchasing policy needs some updates. We have, the SBOA requires any deposits or down payments of 50%, up to 50%, the council has to approve before we can make a deposit like for a entertainment or whatever. So their suggestion is to add something in our purchasing policy that reflects that. And then we also need to have the purchasing policy contain verbiage pertaining to federal grants on the cost principles, how we spend that money and distribute it that. So with your permission, I would like to send all of this to Dustin to review and update the purchase policy that we have. We do have a prepayment ordinance, like payment in advance, so I don't know if maybe possibly combine the two into one document, so everything's together, but just need his permission to look over everything and get us where we need to be to meet SBOA requirements.
That's what.
And get us where we need to be to meet SBOA requirements.
And that's what, counsel, if you recall, this is what Mrs. Barrett had indicated in her notes as well. So I'd entertain a motion for the suggestion for Mr. Hudson's review.
I make a motion for Mr. Hudson to review the purchasing policy updates.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries. Thank you. Up next, John, you're up with the Van Osta IT infrastructure proposal.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. If you guys recall, last year, December 24, we signed a contract with VA for IT, and we knew our infrastructure was outdated. We had much to do, an audit on our infrastructure. In front of you, you have a proposal that is $72,012.9 for upgrade for our infrastructure. Majority of this is a one-time purchase. There is every three-year renewal for the Fortinet items, which run to every $146 for three years, and everything else is a one-time occurrence. Broken down by departments, the general fund is $38,384.37, electric department $7,797.3. The water department is $8,628.22. Wastewater is $8,780.74. The golf course is $8,421.73 for that part. If you look at your third page, it is equipment, computers that are outdated and not compatible with Windows 11, which comes October 15th or 17th, somewhere in that timeline, that will no longer support Windows 10 or anything prior to that. So you're looking at roughly 34 computers, and it's broken down on that sheet there, where it says for the fire department, they not needed them, they will need the seven computers at the fire station. And that's broken down between like three desktops, and the rest are for trucks. Their net price is $35,624.89. We have representatives of VF here to answer any questions, because some of the stuff, you look at it, it's good to me.
Counsel, would you like to come here to answer any questions, or just give an actual overall presentation, or that's what they've actually came for?
Yeah.
Step right on up.
Start with the computer systems. Mr. Myers says those computers, the majority of them are on Windows 10, which becomes insecure. And so what happens is that we want to get security updated, so we are asking the customers to upgrade those. Some are upgradable, depending where we have to create those, but there are some that just aren't compatible, and however standard they're installed, which will upgrade those computers.
Oh, do you have to upgrade computers?
Great question. Would you like to say at least every five years, or say three years is really human preference up higher, as to how often to upgrade them, and things are a little outside of that, and you don't end up with them, so you've got to break down your.
Thank you. Well, first, oh yeah, the quote on these expired, just about four days, right?
That's right. We were able to secure some distributor discounts. I'm not saying that those discounts won't be extended, it's just we don't have visibility to that right now. And so this is what I know today, in this market, right, that we're trying to, this week, I'll be able to review this. So we'll be able to prove it this week, and I'll be able to review this. So we'll be able to prove it this week, right, and order it out.
Yeah, I doubt they'll go down. So, okay, so moving on, that's item one, and then the next was your actual infrastructure.
The infrastructure, did you ever call that we replaced the firewalls in last year, which is kind of the outer edge of your network, everything else we call inside your network, and that, for the most part, is your wiring, your data switches, right, which your computers, your phones, your printers, your security cameras, they all plug in to the switches, like switchboards, and so this includes those switches, and then the Wi-Fi access points, and so Wi-Fi access points, we like to get all of that in one fabric, so to speak, so that it's all one consistent managed component. And so today, we have a lot of mismatch, a lot of stuff that's outdated, a lot that really doesn't exist. There are many places here in town where you're using Wi-Fi of the circuit provider, internet provider, which is insecure. It's like going, using public Wi-Fi on Starbucks, right, which is basically the same. What we recommend is that we utilize this consistent Fortinet fabric, make sure that they're secure.
So you're bringing us basically up to speed.
Yes.
So speak, up to date with everything. Rhonda, can you give us my chance to break down the difference of what we incurred last year, bringing them on as opposed to going forward? So the costs that we spent with them thus far, and that was just to get us up and running, right, with your firm, right?
The firewalls were a hard way to purchase, they're made at stage one.
Just don't nail that letter, and that's all for absolutely.
Is there a yearly fee on top of what we have here?
So what we did is we built three years, as John said, into a price that is so good for three years.
Okay, thank you.
And that includes subscriptions and patches for that network infrastructure.
If you're as much as. If you want to, at least twice, I can get you that number later, I can grab it right now.
Okay, okay. So what we're doing tonight, then, John, I just want to make it clear, and I'll ask Dustin too, Dustin, do you have to review any of this prior to anything we just?
Very, very good.
You can just quote, so that we work on that. So we actually need to, please give us this quote here, for instance, at this point here, of the date of the 29th. So we would need to go ahead, if we wanted to secure this price, it is confused, but go ahead and work on it, since we get it passed tonight.
We can do anything like what you said, if you don't, you need your quotes that could go over there.
Yeah, that's one.
Rhonda and I have spoken over the last week or two. We found the funds in the CCD that this could be covered out of.
That was my next question. So you gave us the breakdown here, even though it gives us the breakdown of that, and where were you going to take the?
We could take all of the tax-funded departments to pay out a CCDF, like the utilities pay their own, or we could pay all of it out of CCDF.
Yeah.
And that was a discrepancy back for the budget, a discrepancy back for the budget workshop coming up.
Okay.
But there is enough funding in CCDF to cover both of these quotes, and then a bit of meeting we'll discuss using CCDF to pay the minimum fees.
Okay. Your folks all feel comfortable so far, all the, yes, Justin?
Yeah, I do want to say the computers, the fire department, that's the regular one that needs to be upgraded, like.
It shows four, four Dell Pro rugged. Is that for police? Our list showed four, four police, four. Well, Rhonda had said she thought.
Yeah, I wasn't sure. Mary and I weren't sure. We thought it was police, but then.
That's right.
So you're going to get what's correct on this quote, right?
Thank you.
So counsel, anyone else have any questions or discussions, either Rhonda, the VF, or?
I don't have any questions.
Justin or Chief? Chief, you have anything in reference to?
No, I've created a higher end computer that we could have made to Windows 11, but they're able to save that. I will put their judgments today. Be careful.
Okay, thank you. So I want to get this straight. So Dustin, we first.
Do we need motion, since we've already approved?
You do, because this is a purchase, so do them all, or all at once?
So we do the upgrade first, right? This is the upgrade, it's at one price, then this is the actual purchase of the hardware, so it's two. Okay, so counsel, the first recommendation would be to go with the actual network upgrades with that seventy, seventy thousand twelve or nine.
So, no.
Second. All those, we have a first and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries. The second part to this, then, and I will.
Make a motion to approve the second part to this Van Osta fire quote for $35,624.89 for the hardware. Mike says second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, or any, I'm sorry, opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Then we get to both of us. Do you want to have John sign?
Well, yes, do we go ahead and?
Make a motion, authorize John to sign that, please.
I make a motion to have John sign those codes.
Second, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Thank you, thank you, Mary, thank you, John, Rhonda, everyone.
Thank you.
Next up is the Main Street Group Public Presentation, Sarah Beth.
All right, well, thank you all for giving us some time this evening to talk about this, and thank you all for attending this evening, that are here for this. You recognize the blue shirts. Everyone here is in a blue shirt, is a supporter of the Main Street, and on the board of the Main Street organization. So a little bit of history, this actually started back in 2018, one of the first initiatives when I came on board here, and actually, they had a Main Street 101 meeting in Hope, and actually spent the afternoon with great. had a Main Street 101 meeting in Hope and actually spent the afternoon with great suite having lunch and learning about what all Hope had done over the last few years to get their organization going. And we received two grants over the last, oh, 2018 and 2019. We received a downtown development grant and the pilot peer grant through OBR to get us going and get us started. And then, we all know what happened in 2020, and a couple of those programs went away and everything changed for the next really two to three years on Oprah's end. And so during that time, though, we have been working with the cities of Rushville and Wall Bash, learning from them, spending time with their mayors and their special project leaders and how they revitalize their communities and especially their downtown. Then 2022, we have our bicentennial. And so really, the adoption of the comprehensive plan is what really got the wheels turning again on this program. So if you don't know who I am, I'm Chrissy Riley. I'm a big part of this group. But you're kind of, who is this group? Edinburgh Main Street is made up of people who care deeply about our community. It is a diverse group, business owners, residents, retirees, new families, town employees, and even management partners. Everyone brings a unique perspective, but we share the same goal, making downtown thriving and welcoming. Importantly, this is a community led effort, not just government or business. I'm lighting my. Yep, there we go. There we go. All right. So what is, what is a Main Street organization? Indiana Main Street is a state program that helps towns revitalize their downtown. It is built on grassroots, community-driven efforts, and is powered by volunteers and local stakeholders. Main Streets are proven catalysts for attracting new businesses and jobs, restoring historic buildings, hosting events that bring people to downtown, and building pride in the heart of the community. So when? Now. The time is right. Edinburgh's comprehensive plan calls for this exact step, creating a Main Street organization. This plan highlights Main Street as a way to organize events, encourage building reuse, and promote downtown to residents and business. We already have the momentum, and if we start now, we align perfectly with our long-term community goals. And the big one, the why? Why, why Main Street? Why now? Downtown is the heart and identity of any community. For Edinburgh, revitalizing downtown means revitalizing our entire community. Our residents have spoken during the comp plan, nearly 70% were unhappy with the retail, restaurants, and entertainment options. 77% wanted more shopping, and over 90% wanted more restaurants and entertainment in the community. Main Street gives us a structured, proven way to answer those needs. Importantly, it lessens the burden of the local government, of all of us, by bringing in organized outside groups to really do the work on it. This rap here is from the Indiana Main Street 2024 year review. Across Indiana, Main Street organizations have brought in millions in investment, thousands of volunteer hours, and new businesses. These numbers prove that this program works, and towns with ours are feeling the real results. So how are we going to do this? Main Streets provide a roadmap for success. It connects us to grants and funding and expert advisors. And I do want to point out, they're not here this evening because they also have their board meeting, but we have been, our hands have been held the entire time by Franklin Heritage Incorporated out of Franklin. They run the Art Craft Theater and Madison Street Salvage and are responsible for doing a lot of the, not only store building renovations downtown, but the store home renovations around the community as well. So if anyone remembers riding down Jerk's Street 10 years ago, very different streets than it is today. It also is, we do not have to reinvent the wheel. This is a proven program, and we can follow proven strategies that have worked for towns with similar size and demographics since the 1980s. The best part, we decide, all of us decide what's right for Edinburgh, and Main Street helps us to get there. We really do have to organize. Main Streets around us. So there are 19 Indiana accredited Main Streets, 18 nationally accredited Main Street. So we're not alone. Many of our neighbors have a thriving Main Street organization. Franklin, Rushville, Shelbyville, Seymour, Madison, and others already created that. Madison was even awarded the Great American Main Street Honor in 2024. Edinburgh is one of the most important. So our status right now. We've already accomplished a lot. We've built a core team and identified board members. We've attended the training sessions through OBR. We've drafted bylaws and articles of incorporation. We've created a website and social media presence. And actually, the store Madison is sort of following us today, so that's pretty exciting. And we completed a downtown business and building inventory. Just on the East and West Main crosswalk of downtown, we have 13 completely vacant storefronts. Five of those are solely used for storage. Out of 32 buildings, we have 17 that are not open on a regular basis. So what's left? We need to file up a nonprofit in Indiana, which we are currently working on. We have to draft a budget, which we're working on. And we have to send a press release and hold a town hall to update our community, which we are doing right now. Okay, so how can you support Edinburgh Main Street? Provide meetings. Allow us to meet at the community center. Provide access to print meeting materials. If we need to print something off, allow us to utilize that. Provide a letter of support for our application for ODM. It is a requirement that we have a letter of support from our town council. Allow quarterly updates at council meetings. We want you to update it so that you know what we're doing. And support strategic plans developed by Edinburgh Main Street. Allow us to put a link in a landing page on the town website. These are the calls that hide impact ways that the town council can help Edinburgh Main Street. And how can the public, how can anyone sitting here today that wants to be a part of this great organization and great initiative be a part of it? Well, Main Street is built on four pillars, and those are economic vitality, design, organization, and promotion. All four of those come together to create community transformation. So economic vitality focuses on revitalizing and strengthening the district economy, supporting small businesses and attracting investment. The design group enhances the physical appearance of the area, making downtown attractive, safe, and welcoming. Promotion is the marketing and promoting of the district, marketing downtown as a destination, not only to visitors, but tourists alike. And organization creates a strong foundation for sustainable revitalization efforts, including partnerships and community involvement. This balanced approach ensures progress isn't one-sided and strengthens the entire community. There are lots of ways. We have a strong group of people that want to revitalize and do our downtown and grant that credit. So that is our request and have your support in the other way. And I did send an award package. There was two letters. There was a support letter, and then there was actually a letter of intent, and that is to apply. So the application review on how we adhere to OBR to apply for the ODM. So the Main Street organization has been revamped, like everything in the state right now. And so it's not just applying for a Main Street. We have to apply for a destination affiliate network, so it's called an ODM, and then inspiring Main Street, and then Indiana Main Street, and then national Main Street organization. So we have a lot of foundational requirements to meet, but our letter of intent needs support from our town council. This is a partnership. It's a huge, a huge part of this is just the community support, support from our local leaders like you. So that's part of it. And then we also have a letter of support to include with our application. Any questions?
Ladies, how have you actually reached out to the community to ask about the membership from not only you folks as business owners, but the public as well? Was this during the comp plan process as well, Sarah Beth?
Yes. So the comp plan, we had the survey. It covered place making, revitalization, preservation, economic development, all of that. And so that survey that over 400 community members took, those action items that came out of that, so those stats that I read were actually from page 64 of the comp plan. So when the community filled out, 77% said, we want to see more of this, or we're not happy with this, we want to see more. So one of the action items from the goal of creating Main Street was to get an organization started and start addressing those goals and action items from the comp plan. And that was the place making, economic development, preservation, downtown revitalization.
And anyone can apply at any given time to be on the committee, correct?
Yes. We are actively looking for volunteers.
And I assume you'll advertise that at the upcoming Fall Festival activities as well?
Yes. We also reached out all the town business owners and sent an email and made sure that multiple of them, to make me part of it. So, and, you know, school has started, sports has started. So Haley from Notch and Popcorn, sorry that she can't be here this evening, but there's a mismatch tonight, and we have other business owners that are supportive. And, yeah, so they stay on the email, and we've had different people come in. Miss Will Helm from the bank has attended meetings, and we've had different stakeholders. Jason Bell is also on our board, and he is the sales director for Spring Development. So with all the hotels down in Exeter, he's on our board as well. We've got a lot of really good regional stakeholders, and like I said, Franklin Heritage and Discover Downtown Franklin have also been a part of them.
So ladies, you need?
What do you need exactly from us?
We need letters signed, and I think I actually just put Brian's name on there. So we do have time. We could wait for signatures unless there is for someone else to sign. I can't remember if they just included his name on there, or they were.
One was kids, and one was Senator Main Street Rep, and Senator Mayor, Mayor Council official. Give the signature, okay?
Dustin, is there any other research or anything you have to do?
It's okay to make a motion to approve there.
There'll be two separate documents then for approval, correct? You, Sarah Beth?
One's a letter of support, and then the other is a letter of intent to apply for Main Street.
Okay. And even though.
You need both approved?
Really just the letter of support.
Have the letter approved?
That should include in there.
John can sign that one, can't he? The letter of intent?
Signature of mayor.
I think it's either an official.
Signature of mayor or town council official, and then the signature of Main Street rep. Would that be you or Chrissy?
Yes.
And within the letter from the town, does not need approval to sign?
Does need approval to sign. Not on our end, for, I don't think, I think we got any approvals.
We need approval for why it is signed, just.
Two documents, he approved, the letter of support.
Letter of intent. So first of all, counsel, wait. Does anybody have any questions in reference to the letter of intent as presented?
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead with the letter of intention, Indiana Main Street program, who presents our affiliate network, ODM.
Okay, I have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, on this then, as we said again, so John can sign off with a town official on this. Okay. So we need a motion for John to sign on that.
Yeah, hang on. We'll make it easier. So do a second motion for the letter of support.
Make a motion that we approve the letter of support for Main Street organization to revitalize that town.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None.
Now you have a motion for John to sign both documents.
Make a motion that John Myers, our town manager, sign both of our documents supporting Main Street.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Good presentation.
Thank you. Try to get back to the.
Okay. Next up, we have Mr. Clark with the meter purchase quote.
Last thousand Main Street over three years. This is the almost last quarter of this. So this addition is three hundred meters. There's only one vote because we have to purchase this particular meter. The tie-down is going to be a record building of this system. So we think that particular meter is a good one.
Same companies in the past, right?
Same, same year, same unit, same.
Counsel, any questions?
There are no questions. I'll make a motion to approve the Westo quote for 300 meters for $67,050.
Second. I have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Next up, we have the Assistant Street Superintendent position, Mr. Barnett. Counsel, you have any questions? John, you have anything about Jainer Chang?
No, I've been out on site with Mr. Bell, and he's always working hard, has a lot of knowledge. I stop by there at lunchtime at the shop. He's one of the first ones to jump up, ready to get back to work. And he's always looking for things to do. I think it's a wise decision to promote him.
It's great. Great. Okay. Will there be any changes in status, salary, or other than the title or?
There'll be a salary increase.
Okay. That will, that will go into effect with this budget or next?
Yes.
Okay, next budget.
The position's been open for a.
Next nine, yes, next nine months. Okay. Counsel, any discussion? There's a motion, Mr. Barnett, so.
What's his name again? Make a motion to promote Travis Bell to the Assistant Street Superintendent position.
Have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Welcome aboard, sir. Thank you. Okay, counsel, we'll move on to other business. We'll start with Rhonda.
Actually, earlier when I was talking about the purchase policy, I forgot. I have two claims. I have a claim for a entertainment for the Fall Festival. They are wanting a 50% down payment of $1,000 deposit that needs to be approved. And then also, Heming Fencing is doing the fencing job for the parking rack, and they are requesting a deposit for the amount of $5,350. So I need, since we don't have that in that purchase policy, then I need special permission for these documents.
Questions, counsel? Those can both be approved. Yeah, that's right.
I make a motion to approve claims for the Fall Festival and for fencing.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you.
Have anything else besides that here? Okay. Mr. Myers? Mr. Bryant? Okay. Mrs. Sweet?
I am thoroughly excited to see what Main Street is going to do to our town.
That all share?
That's it. I'm just excited.
No, I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. I don't have anything. Mr. Holston?
Nope.
Okay, we'll start with Chief Little. Okay. Justin? Julie? Okay. Mr. Clark? I'm skipping, I know. Mr. Barnett? Okay. Daniel?
Last weekend's in the pool this weekend. So if you haven't made it there this season, don't fret. You've got three more days to do it. Friday, Sunday, and Monday. So come on out, have a good time. And just to produce some entertainment for the Fall Festival, it's right around the corner. So be excited. I think our wine-spoke booths, they were all sold out. You know, we, it was crazy out there. So things filled up. So it's gonna be a better, have a great year for Edinburgh.
Thank you, Daniel. Sarah Beth? Sarah Beth?
And I love it, John. I am happy to announce that we received a $35,000 grant from the county community foundation. Yes. I'm thrilled after that, that it's going towards the Plaza project. So we pre-received that. We also just received finalized plans for the Plaza, so I'll be sending those down to council members and we'll be posting those online as well. I want to remind everyone that on Friday at 11:00 a.m., it's the cliff reopening downtown. So everyone's ready for Plaza Tuesday, watch the cliff again. So excited to have it reopened. We're going to be cutting down 11:00 a.m., and the public is welcome to come out.
What date was that again, Sarah Beth?
Friday, this Friday, this morning at 11:00 a.m. And then I did, yes. And then I did attend the Indiana Economic Development Association conference last week. It was really great. I wish I could still have him, I could have talked to him about the tax abatements and then backed up what Julie had talked about, because she was spot on. Baker Sully did a presentation and just said basically, over the next three years, the way that the depreciation is going to happen, that tax abatements are really going to be a thing of the past in that community, and people are going to kind of make things out. So he was right on target with that. But I was really fortunate that Indiana Municipal Power Agency paid for that conference for me. It was great to connect with other economic development leaders from around the state and catch up with some of those people from Wall Bash and Rushville that I connected with a few years ago. So very thankful, but thank you for approving for me to go to that, and I learned a lot from workforce development and just Indiana economic commerce was talking about tax abatements and just the local funding and how it's going to change over the next few years. And then we're all sort of trying to get educated on that, so it was a really nice field to attend, but thank you.
Thank you, Sarah Beth. Have I missed anyone? Kamala? Stan? Mr. Brown? I'm sorry, Stan, I didn't see you back there. Did I miss anyone else? I got Julie. I got Julie. I couldn't see that part back there. Okay? There's nothing else from the counsel or other staff? Or entertaining, any comments from the public? You would like to speak? Please state your name and address as you're speaking.
All right. Tim and Eric spoke on the 11th about this far, a real empty lot next door in the desert that was coming up. The ramifications, if that was moved and what the city's stance was on that, just wanted to see if it was a resupply behind it. It's starting to get pretty grum and over there.
I'm right there today. We're still looking into it. I need to speak with Mr. Hudson.
Okay. Would we have the council's approval to scoop that fence a little bit, clean the weeds up and do it back? I don't know what the city's thought about that, but we need to get that cleaned up over there. We do have our grand opening on Friday, and we'd like to clean that pot up.
That's something we should do.
We'd be happy to take care of it. Yeah, feel free to just let us know what it was.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Neen Kester, and I have been asked to be on Main Street Organization. And I know you asked how that came about, and I'm, we'll tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a relatively new resident to Edinburgh. I moved here four years ago. We retired to Edinburgh, which I hope we want to be close to family. But once we moved to Timbergate, I just founded a community. I've always lived in a small town, and some small towns give right to me. I started walking. I walked to the library, and I'll look at the library, and then just bypassing all the little stores downtown and realizing that everything just seems a little kid's butt. So I'm happy to be part of this organization as a, kind of an outsider to bring some perspective to that, and I'm looking forward to helping all of these great people from Edinburgh spruce it up a little bit.
Well, thank you. We appreciate that. Anyone else tonight? That be all.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? Motion, I have to do a first and a second for that need to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.